Good morning and welcome to the Board of County Commission meeting, this is a regular meeting Tuesday, June 8th. Is Pastor Aaron Long from Village Church with us today? I don't see him, so I'm going to ask Commissioner Bill Pickens to give our invocation, Commissioner Turner to do our pledge of allegiance. Please rise if you're able to do so.
Let us pray. Our heavenly Father, we just thank you for this glorious day and all the blessings in it, Father God. We just thank this opportunity to gather here, Father God, as a commission, Father God, our staff, we thank you for all the work that they've prepared for this meeting. Father God, we thank you for all the people in the audience. We ask a special blessing and just a thank you for all the people, the sheriff's office that we're going to honor today for special recognition for their outstanding achievements of all the good. Just guide us and lead us to make the best decisions for the citizens of Putnam County. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the praise. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Pickens and Commissioner Turner for that. Appreciate it. Commissioner Adam Zach is in the facility today. He has a personal matter that he needs to take care of and he will pop in when he needs to at that point, so we appreciate that. Next item on the agenda, gentlemen, is the approval of the minutes as stated in your agenda, pages five through 25.
Move approval.
Proper motion by Commissioner Turner, proper second by Commissioner Rawls, is that correct? Okay. Any further discussion on the matter? Hearing that, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, the ayes have it. Next item we're going to deviate from real quick is we have an honorary guest in our building today. Our distinguished House member, Representative Bobby Payne, is going to come up and speak to us today and his assistant, Leota Wilkinson, is in the audience as well. Leota, welcome. Welcome.
Is the mic on?
It is, sir.
Okay, great. Good morning, Commissioners, Chairman, thank you for having me, members of the crowd today. Just want to give a quick update. We were unable to attend a couple of weeks ago when Senator Perry's staff was here, so we wanted to stop in and give you, now that the governor has signed the budget, the latest updates for appropriations for Putnam County and run through those fairly quickly. We were very pleased with the appropriations that were signed for Putnam County and they consisted of numerous areas in the budget. We have up to $41 million coming back to Putnam County, depending on how you want to divide it. You know, members put in projects each year and I think you recall from the delegation meeting last year.
Get on up there if you are.
But members put in projects each year. We've been very fortunate in Putnam County to be able to get some of those projects funded. I know the city of Palatka put in for a vacuum truck at $425,000 and we did receive funding for that, as well as the continuation of a project that I worked with Commissioner Turner on and all of you at some point in time on the east Putnam drainage and flooding area. Most of you remember 2017 storm that came through and we were flooded for some time. And that was a combination of things that we need to have done to improve that ditch drainage, to get the water flow back to the river and then be mitigated out through different methods. But that was a million dollar request this year and it was funded, so. Additionally, we had funding that supported over $18 million in road projects, $11 million in primary education, and $25 million for secondary education at the state college level. At the end of session, or probably in the middle of session, typically we put in appropriations projects early on in the year and we thought we'd have a shortfall due to COVID. At one time it was projected to be a $5.4 billion shortfall. The revenue in Florida improved over that period of time, thanks to a lot of great work by Governor DeSantis and the Speaker and the President. And so our shortfall was not as much as what we thought it would be, but then also we see federal dollars, over $3 billion of federal dollars came into the state. And we were asked how we wanted to use those funds. If you recall, last year the governor vetoed a billion dollars in funding and most of those were member projects. So we were asked to go back and fill those gaps of those member projects that we were not able to fulfill over the last couple of years. And so very excited of the fact that we received 1.25 million, 1.225 million for the fairgrounds this year for a facility there that we had requested over a couple of years and it would be a multi-use facility, so we did receive that. Additionally, you know, I was looking back over the period of time for the last several years in the district. District 19 is made of Putnam, Bradford Union, and portions of Clay County. And through the hard work of, if you recall, Chairman Travis Cummings, Senator Rob Bradley, now Jennifer Bradley, Sam Garrison, and certainly Keith Perry, Senator Perry, we've actually brought back to the county in funding of those different type of mechanisms over 1.5 billion dollars over five years. So that's a staggering number. It's a huge number. As well as future opportunities with the Speaker's team that have been appointed to, we'll continue to have three or four more good years if I can serve out the full number of years of terms of my opportunity to serve eight years. Additionally, I wanted to let you know and let members of the audience know that over several years I've worked on comprehensive water package. We passed a comprehensive water package in 2020 that was covered everything from wastewater runoff to groundwater to septic to sewer conversions. But one of those packages in there, one of the pieces in there was a biosolids rules ratification. We didn't pass that in 2020 because we felt like we need to spend a little more time with a review committee. There was a review committee appointed in 2018, there was a biosolids task force review committee, and using the lessons learned, what are we going to do with biosolids? I know biosolids is an issue that you have on your agenda today and just wanted to give the opportunity to let you know that we have good resources through Secretary Valensting, the EP secretary, and that we can help support or make sure that knowledge and information is passed on to the public. It is a lengthy process to get an application permit. There is a process of public hearings that will take place and those can happen anytime the applicant submits an application. And I just want to make sure that you know you have the resources at the state office in case you need those resources, so.
Thank you.
No questions. I appreciate the opportunity.
Representative, your staff member, Leota, sent those conditions out yesterday in email to us and we appreciate that. It was very eye-opening.
Yeah, it is, yeah.
I want to personally thank you for the work you do for Putnam County and our region. You are a champion in Tallahassee, you're a friend of ours and we can pick up the phone and call you and you bring results back to the county. And it's important for the citizens to know how much of a good relationship we have with our legislators. You know, we don't get everything done that we want, nobody does, but at the end of the day, we're moving Putnam County forward and I appreciate that.
Well, thank you for saying that, Chairman. I think it's important to make sure that the public knows and that our, whether it's city or county government, knows that we're available to assist. We are policy and rules makers, but we don't always, we don't have the opportunity to enforce the rules and regulations. We do have an opportunity to make sure they're visible and known and we want to make sure we're always doing the right thing. I think that's the goal of all of us in public office is to make sure we improve the quality of lives for our citizens and make sure we're improving opportunities for our communities. So with that, thank you and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you today.
Thank you, Representative.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. All right, the next item on our agenda, we have a 905, our Port Authority. Gentlemen, we're going to reassess our Board of County Commission and convene our Port Authority and the first item of business is our approval of the minutes.
Move approval as listed.
I'll second.
Proper motion by Commissioner Turner, second by Commissioner Pickens. Any further discussion on the minutes that are listed in the agenda? Hearing that, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, the ayes have it. Is there any public comment on Port Authority items only? At this moment, only on Port Authority items. Hearing none, we'll bypass the, we'll move over from the public comment. Any general discussions on Port Authority from Commissioners?
I've got one topic.
Okay, Mr. Rawls, you have the floor.
So I met with Mr. Troxler last week, we took a look at the backflow preventers out at Comfort Road. I think they're at the end of their useful life and at the time, when you look at these things, they're beyond sad. Somebody actually welded on, you were a welder, they welded on the cast iron. The nuts are rusting off of them. The complaint, I got a complaint from an engineer that was flow testing fire hydrants that said, "We have diminished flow, there's a problem with your backflow preventer." So as we were leaving, I said, "Do you have the money, the budget to find the money?" And he goes, "Port Authority has it, right?" And I said, "I think so." So if I'm not mistaken, we're responsible for the maintenance of the water system, including the backflows and the piping in the ground. That's not the city's, that's ours.
Correct, I believe so.
Then the conversation came up, if we're breaking even on that system and now we've got to spend $10,000 just on the materials or more, labor, I don't know what labor is going to cost, but why do we want to be in that business out there if we're having to fix this stuff, including water meters and how do we ever?
Well, I think, what was?
If we give it back, if the city will want to take it back.
I guess that's what I'm looking for is a solution.
We had a meeting a while back, if I may, Mr. Chairman. We had a meeting a while back that we discussed that with the city or something, or we discussed going to the city about seeing if they wanted that system or something and I don't exactly know where that ended up or not. I mean, originally, the county had to put it in way back because the city didn't or whatever and so they had to put it in and they actually, if my memory serves me well, also ran the water all the way up to the jail from south, down there, I don't remember if it was on 100 or 19 or somewhere way south, and the county actually ran the water to the jail with the caveat that anybody that tied on to that water system between where they started and where they finished at the jail, that the county got the impact fees to help them recruit, get the money back, recoup the monies from that they put in for that water line. So the water line, I believe, and I could be wrong, but the water line, I believe, belongs to the city, to the county, or maybe even the city, but the county gets the money for tap fees until the money's paid back for the cost of the line. So that may be part of that too, I don't know.
My concern is that when I say these things are rusting, literally, there's a nut with a piece of rust that I picked off and now there's, all the way down to the threads, there's a piece that nut missing. All of them are like that, I don't.
Could we replace the nuts or are the preventers themselves still good or?
No, they're shot and the fire suppression engineer thinks that the checks are, I personally think that if you go out there and try to open the checks out, up, you're going to create more leaks. There were leaks, somebody welded them, which is unusual, but if you go out there and look at it, you'll see what I'm talking about, but they're gone. But then I started thinking about if we're buying the water from the city at a marked up price, the city sells it to us and then we mark it up and sell it to the end user, but we're not making enough to cover the cost of the infrastructure, it almost seems mindless that we would do the end user a favor if we stepped out of the middle and didn't mark it up and I think the city sells us at a higher rate anyways.
Why don't we, if I may, why don't we ask staff to open that rhetoric up again with the city and see where that stopped and where we are as far as moving on and then possibly even find out what the backflow preventers are going to, it's going to be a lot cheaper to do them now than it's going to be.
$4,800 a piece. $4,800 a piece.
Well, it's going to be a lot cheaper than if it happens on a Saturday evening at two o'clock in the morning, then it's going to be $15,000 and get somebody to go out there and fix it.
One of the wheels is missing on one of the valves, you can't even shut one valve off, you'd have to take a wheel off of one to put on the other.
Wow, okay.
But it just, there's two backflow preventers, they're $4,500 something dollars plus tax, so we're taxing.
Why don't we ask them to start working on them if that's okay and then we'll see where we go with the city if that's all right, Mr. Chairman.
It is. I think there's also a DEO grant that was involved in that process, so you might want to look at that at the same time, okay?
Does that mean we have to keep it?
And you're going to bring us back a solution with, work with Commissioner Rawls on a solution for that?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, we'll do all those things. Absolutely.
Thank you, thank you very much. Commissioner Rawls, any further?
No, that's it.
Okay, anybody else?
Yes, sir, I have one thing I would like to bring up just for maybe a update on. How are we coming on the filtration system for the splash pad out there?
I'll take that. So I actually just met with Julianne, there was a misunderstanding on the email that I'd sent out a few weeks ago requesting, so we need to reach out to the original installer and get them to give us the ASBILTS that show the flows for all the different heads. Otherwise, what's happening is the bids are coming in and people are assuming, making assumptions of the flows are, so they're throwing these crazy numbers at it. I was told by one installer, if we had an engineer go ahead and give the flow data, then they'll match a system to that, otherwise, they're going to have to hire an engineer and these guys are putting like $20,000 in there for engineering and we can get it done for less than $8,000.
It was my, yeah, it was my understanding that everything's already plumbed and ready to go to put in the new tank and the filtration system, but that's not included, so if we don't have ASBILTS, we ought to be able to get them, I hope.
The system is extremely simple, there's one pipe going to the retention pond, one coming from the valves that are next to the bathroom buildings. So all you're going to do is interrupt those two pipes, put them into a tank, VacPak makes the tank and the filtration system, but they don't know how to size it. I contacted them and talked to them and they said, "If you tell us what your flow data is, we'll, we can give you a price," but, and then it's just a matter of getting somebody to stick it in the ground and.
I bet that's included in the original bid, the flow data for that system.
I've looked at everything that we've got and nothing has anything on it and I don't know if it's proprietary information, they just don't want to give it out, but you know, each of those elements has a certain amount of flow per minute. So all we have to do is match that and the engineer will probably upsize it by 10 or 15, 20%, whatever they do.
That's all ahead, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Turner, appreciate that. Is there any further discussion? We're going to end our Port Authority meeting, go back to our Board of County Commission meeting and the next item on our agenda, Sheriff Gator Deloche is in the building. Mason, good to see you also. Sorry to call you out, but you knew I probably would.
He did better than I would have done, Mason. I'd have said, "And we want to introduce the future state representative or senator or governor or whatever."
We don't know what the future holds in store for him, but I'm sure it's going to be, going to be right.
I'm going to scare him off, okay?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. It's our pleasure today to be before you again to recognize some of our finest for exemplary service. Colonel Wells will read the recommendation for the awards and then we'll proceed from there.
So I'm going to ask the recipients to step forward with the sheriff prior to the reading. Not all of these folks could be with us today due to other duties or other conflicts, but we are going to recognize all of them. So we're going to begin with a larger group of individuals that were all involved in the same incident, beginning with Putnam County Sheriff's Office, medical staff, LPN Caitlin Brown, Nurse Brown, Deputy Sheriff Terrence Haynes, Deputy Sheriff Kelsey Ritchie, Deputy Helen Brady, Deputy Jessica Green, Deputy Greg Session, and Deputy Charles Word. Again, like I said, a lot of these folks weren't able to be here and we'll catch with them later due to other duties. On April 22nd, 2021, Putnam County Corrections deputies observed a female inmate having a medical issue. They immediately responded to the area and noticed that she was in distress and full seizure. When they arrived, they noted that she was not taking sufficient breaths to sustain life. Facility medical staff were summoned and also responded without delay. Chest compressions, rescue breaths, and the use of an AED were immediately utilized in an effort to sustain life. Due to their training and expertise, staff suspected that the incident could be related to an overdose and Narcan was immediately administered. The inmate was transported to Putnam Community Medical Center and made a full recovery. Actions of these professionals have saved the life of a fellow human being and provided the inmate with another chance at recovery. We pray she will take advantage of recovery programs available inside our jail in pursuit of a happy and productive life. So as a result of this incident, Nurse Caitlin Brown, Deputy Sheriff Terrence Haynes, and Deputy Kelsey Ritchie are hereby awarded the Life Saving Award. Deputy Sheriff Helen Brady, Jessica Green, Greg Session, and Charles Word are hereby awarded the Sheriff's Achievement Medal.
Caitlin, if you would, please join me at the podium. The Life Saving Award is hereby presented to Caitlin Brown in recognition of your courageous actions during emergency by coming to the aid of a fellow human being with dedication and diligence. You're hereby commended for your outstanding actions on April 22nd, 2021, which led to the preservation of a life.
Thank you.
Congratulations, thank you. Deputy Ritchie, if you would join me at the podium, please. This Life Saving Award is hereby presented to Deputy Kelsey Ritchie in recognition of your courageous actions during emergency by coming to the aid of a fellow human being with dedication and diligence. You're hereby commended for your outstanding actions on April 22nd, 2021, which led to the preservation of life. The Sheriff's Achievement Award is hereby presented to Deputy Helen Brady in recognition of performing your duties with diligence and excellence. Your quick and decisive actions on April 22nd, 2021 were instrumental in assisting others which led to the preservation of life.
Thank you.
Sheriff, you want to bring them up for a pitch?
Absolutely.
Do you want to go down or stand up here? Sheriff, where do you want to?
Allison, Allison, where do you want?
You asked the wrong person.
Helen, come here, you're short.
You want us down, you want us down there or up here?
I think you're good there.
Okay.
Use it as a crutch, slide in, slide out, chair slide in.
Can Julianne stand on the cant?
That's not nice.
I was thinking that, but I didn't have the guts to say it.
Hold them up, straight, all right, everybody suck it in, smile, 2, 3.
I take offense to that.
Yeah, I can't suck it in that hard.
I sucked all I could suck.
Yeah, when I blew it back out, it was.
Bring your families up, please, this is a good time. This is what we really are about.
Bring the children.
She's a sweetie.
Just for this morning. Julianne, yes, you have to come up front.
It is that time of the month, isn't it?
All right, and everybody look this way. And here we go, 1, 2, 3.
Good deal.
Congratulations and thank you.
Sheriff, this is truly the best part of this job.
Indeed it is. I just want to mention just a couple of quick words before I depart the podium here. These individuals were recognized out of our Department of Corrections who have, by my estimation, probably some of the most difficult jobs at the sheriff's office. They're continually dealing with inmates and they do it with excellence on a daily basis and it's not all that often that we get an opportunity to recognize them for their excellence in service that they provide, so in my opinion, all of our corrections deputies and staff are to be commended for their efforts. Okay, we have one final award.
Sheriff, Commissioner Rawls? I just want to say, you know, to the recipients today, it's really amazing when you have an opportunity to serve and you're able to take your training and apply it because a lot of people get the training, never have the opportunity to actually apply it and sometimes you get complacent and you think, you know, it's just a waste of time, but I think this speaks volumes for what the training's worth, what it can do and, you know, especially with Narcan availability and being able to get it on the street and utilize it. So congratulations to everybody and just thank you for your service and your attendance.
I agree.
Okay, we have one final award to present.
Deputy Sheriff Peyton Stout, please come forward and join the sheriff. Throughout Deputy Stout's career at the Putnam County Sheriff's Office, he has shown an uncanny ability to seek out and confiscate dangerous contraband that impedes on the safety and security of both the inmates and the staff of the Putnam County Jail. On April 23rd, 2021, while conducting routine shift change, Corrections Deputy Peyton Stout entered the inmate worker dorm and discovered the presence of contraband. Deputy Stout informed the supervisors what was going on and an immediate shakedown of the cell block was conducted. This resulted in the confiscation of multiple more items of contraband and information as to who was responsible for introducing the contraband to the facility. Deputy Stout, on no less than 12 documented occasions, has intercepted weapons, drugs, tattoo equipment, and multiple other forms of contraband. Deputy Stout has continuously exhibited the kind of culture, discipline, and officer awareness required to continually perform his duties at the highest level. Because of his continued efforts to maintain a safe and secure environment for the staff and inmate population, Deputy Peyton Stout is hereby awarded the Sheriff's Achievement Medal.
The Sheriff's Achievement Award is hereby presented to Deputy Sheriff Peyton Stout in recognition of your continuous effort.
in recognition of your continuous effort of performing your duties with excellence so as to provide a safe and secure environment for the members and inmate population of the Putnam County Sheriff's Office. So before we take the photograph, I will tell you, prior to Peyton receiving this award and some of his efforts, we'd actually considered the purchase of a narcotics detection dog to deploy in Corrections as an adjunct to the body scanners that we use to detect contraband. But we decided that that probably wasn't a good expenditure of our money, because Peyton does such a great job, not only finding drugs, but also other contrabands. So he is our, he's our drug and contraband dog for, for the entire facility.
I knew you were going to go there, Sheriff, I just knew it.
Touch his nose.
Tell us how you want it. I know Julianne up front.
Well, eventually it's all trained by high order.
We're not very trainable, as you can tell.
All right, and here we go, 1, 2, 3.
Yeah, please. You make the picture look better. Here we have to go there with the Julianne.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. That concludes our presentations for the day.
Thank you, Sheriff, and thank you for coming. Mason, again, good to see you. Our next pres, well, we're going to give it a few minutes to clear out, because I'm sure a lot of sheriff's officers have to get back to work.
We ought to ask Mason to come up and give us a speech while, while everybody's clearing out of the building.
He might give you something else.
Kicking the shin.
That's it. All right, our next presentation, Ms. Stella Brown with our Library Director. Mr. Suggs, would you like to meet her at the? Yeah, I'll come down there in a minute. We'll take a picture down here.
I have one. But if you want to show that off. Sure. Just all as the last person. Good morning to each of you in your respective places. We're here this morning to recognize a volunteer group out of one of my previous work areas that has done a tremendous job that was actually recognized by the state of Florida, which I find very interesting when you look at Duval County, you look at Hillsborough County, you look at Dade County, then you look at little old Putnam County that topped all of them. So we're here this morning to just show our appreciation for the work that they've done, because even during COVID, they never failed to keep the community informed of what was going on, not only in their community, but the four counties that surround it now to the best of their ability. They put in a tremendous amount of work for everything that they do. Kena Ward is Pat Ward's wife, and I'll introduce you to Kena in a few minutes, because everybody seemed to know Pat, but nobody knows Kena. So I'll do a general introduction of who Kena is, but at this moment, I'm going to read what's on the Certificate of Appreciation. The Putnam County Library System and Putnam County Board of County Commissioners present this certificate of appreciation to Kena Ward in gratitude for tireless and exemplary volunteer work on the Melrose Library Association, Inc. newsletter, and in recognition of appointment by the Florida Library Association for being elected Newsletter of the Year for 2021, given this day, June 8th, 2021, presented by none other than Stella Brown, Putnam County Library System Director. Before we go into anything else, I do want to say to the Commissioners and all of the people on the podium, Putnam County Library System greatly appreciate all the effort and work that you all put into, to make sure that we have what we need, to make sure the public has what they need. I don't think sometime people realize how much work is behind the scene in the libraries. It's a ton of work, it's a ton of work. And with you all and the support that you give, you make it possible for us to do what the community needs for us to do. With that being said, I'm going to introduce the members behind me. And when I introduce some of these people, I'm going to start with some of the ones that have been there since before I went to Melrose in 1989. That's not going to tell anybody's age, of course. But Virginia Walker, her aunt, Aileen Smith, was one of the reasons of how they got the library in Melrose. She was on that first committee that worked so diligently to make sure that their community had a library. Kena Ward, this is, I'm going to say Ms. Pat Ward, but her name is Kena Ward. This is Pat Ward's wife. And she is the, oh, wait a minute, I'll get these. She is the coordinator, secretary of fundraising for newsletters. And Kathy Warren, which is right here, Kathy is another one. Kathy goes way back. Kathy was there when I got there. So, and so Kathy and I have been together well over 30 years. Okay, you are Maggie. This is Maggie Blizzard, and she is the director. And this is Andy Blunt. And Andy may not remember me, but when my kids went to school in Keystone, Andy was at the Keystone Library. And she used to help take care of my kids when they got out of school. So she was one of those moms that helped the community raise the village. But today, we're going to issue an award to Kena, who put in so much work to keep us informed, and show her our appreciation by saying, we greatly appreciate everything that you have done and continue to do to keep the community informed by working with such a fine group of people. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, Administration, Staff, and the citizens of Putnam County, I'd like to present this certificate to Ms. Ward on behalf of all her efforts with the newsletter for the Public County Library System. And I also like to take a moment, if I could, to thank Ms. Stella Brown for the awesome work that she does with our libraries. A lot of people don't know this, but Ms. Stella started as a page in the library. Now she's the Library Services Director. What an accomplishment for Putnam County, and we're fortunate to have her. And this is a result of her good work. But Ms. Ward, this is about you. Congratulations on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners.
We can get all of us fit down there, Chairman?
I think we can. There you go. Thank you, well, congratulations. Thank y'all for all your hard work. Ms. Stella, before you leave and the library people leave, when I first got the call from the governor to be appointed to this position, went home and told my wife, and she said, now you make sure you take care of the libraries. I don't care about anything else but the li, and often during budget season, how do libraries do? So I can't get away from that in my house, okay? Yeah. You don't have to lobby me, okay? Thank you. We're going to deviate from our agenda for just a second. And Diane Duquet, the Department of Health for Putnam County, is going to come up and introduce somebody that she wants to introduce. So Diane.
Good morning. I have here Ms. Stacy Branham. She's our newest employee at the Department of Health, and she is our Director of Nursing. Do you want to introduce a little bit about yourself and your background?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Not a good speaker yet, but I'm super excited to be here. Been in the community my whole life. Started at Shans, University of Florida, at the Trauma Center, 2007. Been at the hospital for the past five years. Super excited to get started, sorry, super nervous.
Don't be nervous.
But super excited to get started. Everybody's been very kind, very welcoming. We're going to between our leadership. We're really excited to strengthen our relationship with you guys and the community.
Thank you. We welcome you on board.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, good, good to meet you.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just.
Yes, sir, Mr. Administrator.
Just. Yes, yes. If I could, just like to ask the Commissioners if you can find three to five minutes in your schedule today after today's meeting, maybe prior to lunch, if we can get out that soon, to meet with Ms. Diana Duquet for a few minutes, so she can introduce herself. And she'd like to just kind of meet the, meet the Commission and do that today if at all possible. Thank you.
It's not hard to find us. Just grab them before they go to lunch, and they'll, they're eager to talk then. Or before nap, that's. All right, that'll take care of our presentations today. And the next thing on our agenda is our public comment on agenda items. This is a portion of our meeting that we allow the, our public to contact us and communicate with us on agenda items, and they're in your packet, Items A through L. There is other points in the program today, or the agenda, that you will have time to speak on other items. So if it's not the agenda item that you're seeing, Items A through L, there will be more time. And then there's time at the end of our agenda today to speak also. So is there anybody here in the audience would like to speak to us today about any items on our consent agenda? And the blue cards we got are all on a zoning issue, and there'll be time, the blue cards are on a zoning issue, and there'll be time for that conversation to take place. So seeing no one rushing to the front, again, last call, Items A through L on our agenda. Then we'll, we'll move past the public comment on agenda items. Commissioner, is there any items you want to pull? Commissioner Rawls.
Item B and item E.
Item B and E is in Edward? Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
B is in Bravo, E is in Echo.
Okay, Commissioner Pickens?
I have none.
Commissioner Turner?
I have none.
And I have none. So the Chair will entertain a motion on the remaining items.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we passed Items A, C, D, F, G, H, I, J, K, L on the consent agenda.
Proper motion by Commissioner Turner. Proper second by Commissioner Pickens. Any further comment on this?
Commissioner Rawls.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Rawls made that, Ashley. I apologize for that. Okay. Any further comments on those items? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those like sign, the ayes have it. And now Commissioner Rawls, you have Item B on the agenda.
I want to see if we can pull this and move it to a workshop. I think this is something we should discuss. You know, our LHAP in the past has been lacking. We've never really had a lot of discussion about it, but it's something that we really, 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 really need to focus on, especially in light of what's going on around us right now. You and I, Christian Harvey, were at the Northeast Florida Regional Council meeting, and we kind of dodged around some of the affordable housing conversation. But I think that we should really take a deep dive into the, the contract. And I personally am not sure that we're getting the value that we should, we'd be getting from Guardian for this, but I think we should move this to a workshop and discuss it and see what we can come out with.
Commissioner Turner?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I think that we're too late in the game this year to do this, because we're going to have no representation as of the 30th of this month, I believe. Is that correct? Their contract's up on the 30th. So I don't have a problem having this discussion between now and next year if we think we need to go another route, but it's June 8th, and we got, we're going to have no representation on June 30th. So the ship program and all affordable housing programs in that deal will go away as of June 30th. It'll just stop.
I think maybe we can.
Hang on, Mr. Rawls.
So I, like I said, I don't mind having this conversation. I just don't want to hold up this one today, and that's just me. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Pickens?
I want to hear Commissioner Rawls.
I think maybe we can offer them a, a one-year extension, but I don't think jumping into a three-year extension is the right way to go.
All right, let me ask that question. Julianne, is there availability to reduce the terms of the contract?
Commissioner, the term of the renewal was in the original agreement. It is two years, but we have a 30-day out, no matter what. So we could renew it, and then if the Board desires to cancel it at any time for or without cause, we can cancel it within 30 days' notice. If you'd like.
So to answer Mr. Rawls's question, we could bring it back to a future workshop, discuss it. And if the Board wants to go in a different direction or not, then we have a 30-day out that we could do that's, that's in favor of the county.
Yes, sir.
Okay, understand. Mr. Pickens?
Yeah, I was not going to pull it, but since it was pulled, I think that's an excellent idea, is to look at this. The legislature last year mandated that a Commissioner sit on the Affordable Housing Committee. So I've been brought up to speed more than what we just see when we approve the ship. I actually have two, two meetings per year that I have to zoom in on for, for the District A-HAC members, and it's very enlightening. But the, when I got here five years ago, the ship program was not being managed well. Guardian took it over. They, I'll just say, lack of better words, they stumbled a little bit. Now they're, they're up to speed, and we've really made some really good progress. And I think it's time to, to have a meeting to update on that. We're catching up with our 15, 16, 17, 16, 17, 18 monies. We have worked on the LHAP, and it is under review now. It will come back to the County Commission. So I think Guardian is really working with us well. The A-HAC Committee would meet just periodically. We are meeting every quarter, and we're having a good turnout. We're having a quorum each time. So I think we're making some progress, but I agree, I think it's time to, to look at it, discuss, and just update everybody on how this is working, so.
Thank you. Commissioner Adams, that.
Yeah, so I considered pulling this, but I wasn't here to do it, but so I'm glad it was. When I first looked at it and I thought about the history of it being behind, I was thinking that I, I wouldn't want to, but I will say this, I did have the opportunity to, to attend some of Commissioner Pickens's meetings. And the gentleman that is running this for, for Guardian is doing a fantastic job. I don't know who was running it before, or whatever, but from watching it, there is progress being made, there is, there is things, there is a plan. I'd like to see that plan continue, with us having that option to, like you said, if we had to, if it starts to fall apart at some point, say, hey, you guys, 30 days were up. But at this time, I'd like to see how this progresses with, with that particular gentleman. I would say if they switch people on us or something, then it, it maybe blows that out of the water completely. But this, this particular gentleman, I think, is, is doing a much better job than what I've seen watching some meetings in the past.
Thank you, Mr. Adams, that. Mr. Rawls?
I think in light of what I'm hearing, I, I will vote in favor of moving this contract forward. Is Antonio, is he the one that's?
Yeah, Antonio Jenkins.
Is that who you're referring to, is Antonio? Okay. To answer your question, Commissioner Adams, that, it was the Northeast Florida Regional Council. When Brian Teeples was running it, they had the contract. And it, I have, I have a view from a different vantage point, because I actually worked at one point with ship grant recipients, and we hated doing it. We felt like it was, we almost felt like it was a, an obligation for us to do it just as a community service, because you're going to set yourself up for failure, you're going to lose money on the job. You know, going in, you're going to lose money, because there's going to be a lot of unforeseen conditions, and the building department's going to have to hold you responsible for. But when, when, when I took a look at the LHAP, the one that we're, we're just finishing up and the previous one, I was very frustrated. So if we can have a workshop about this, I think it would be great. I think part of the problem is, is that there has been no, no supervision of the contractor to provide us with anything, so they were just giving us what they thought we needed. And, you know, the, my, my first experience with it after I got elected was when I spoke with a consultant that deals with low-income housing, building homes for low-income housing folks. And she made a phone call to Guardian, and they. And she made a phone call to Guardian, and they couldn't answer any of her questions. And she used to work for the Florida Housing Finance Corporation. And she said, "You guys have really gotta get your act together." So I was being, you know, counseled by somebody that knew what they were doing. So I'm glad that things are moving along, and maybe we can just maintain the relationship and keep an eye on the ball.
Thank you, Commissioner Rawls. Appreciate that. Mr. Turner?
He covered part of what I was gonna say, but we need to keep in mind, this program was really in shambles two years ago. I mean, shambles. And Guardian came in. It took them the first year to kinda figure out what was even going on. It was in such bad shape. So let's be fair about this. It took them a while to get up to par and get things moving. So I think in fairness to this organization, I think they've taken a program that was absolutely in shambles and brought it to the point it's at now. Is it perfect? I agree with you 100%. It's not. But I absolutely believe it's moving in the proper direction to get us there. So I'm for talking about it in workshop, absolutely, but I'd like to get an update from Guardian of where they are and where they think they want to go and how they're trying to move forward. And then it should put everybody's mind at ease, I would say. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Mr. Adamsak?
I'd just like to make sure, I add to what Commissioner Rawls is saying, to maybe allay some of his concerns, is I feel the gentleman that's working with us right now, if any of us called him on the phone, he can not only give us an update with where they are at in the overall program, but I believe he could give us an update of each individual house. I mean, that's how detailed he is when he speaks through things. So just, that's the level of confidence I have at this time. So, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Rawls?
The one thing that I see missing from, one thing I see missing from our LHAP is, and this is, I guess, what we really need to discuss. I wish we had looked at the LHAP before it got submitted. We can modify it anytime we want with the Housing Finance Corporation, is our focus. You know, sitting down as a Commission and determining what our focus is for the community. Because when you take a look at the definition of low-income, very-low income, you know, you're 40% to 60% median income, that's typically who we're dealing with, with low and very-low income. But what about the folks that are 60% to 80%, they kinda fall into a gray space, or 80% to 100. And then you compound it with what's going on around us in the communities where the housing prices are skyrocketing in St. John's and Flagler County. Now we got people moving in here, buying houses like it's no big deal because our housing inventory, even though it's short, it's still a better value than over there. And now we're starting to raise the cost of our median home sale prices, and that directly affects our median income wage earners. So it, we just, what I'm saying is, we need to have a robust conversation about housing as a total in Putnam County. Get some vision and some direction because we do, every time we talk with the Sheriff's Department, the Fire Department, and School District, they're losing positions because, you know, they don't pay enough. But part of paying enough is being able to afford to live as well. So just want to say thank you for the opportunity to be able to bring this to a workshop.
Thank you. Mr. Pickens?
Yeah, and I agree with Commissioner Adamsak. Antonio Jenkins is readily available if you just email him or give him a phone call. And I do have an update that I asked Rania, Antonio, to send me yesterday. Is it okay if I forward it to the Commissioners? I would say it's public record. Is that correct? I see Julianne with a question there.
That's a legal question.
Okay, is that written? Sign forward. And it gives basically an update of where we have moved forward. And as Commissioner Turner said, I didn't use that strong word, shambles, but it was in a mess. And, but we're moving forward, and, but I do think some direction from the Board would be appreciated from the, to the A-HAC Committee, and we meet in July. So I'll discuss that and see if we can get Antonio to set up where he could come and be present at the workshop, and maybe some of the other members. So I'll work on that.
Good. Thank you. So what I'm hearing is Commissioner Pickens, since you're on that, the ship program, you're gonna bring that to a workshop, and then Commissioner Rawls, you'll be able to put input in at that point?
Absolutely.
Okay, good deal. So the Chair will entertain a motion on Item B?
Move approval.
Proper motion by Commissioner Rawls, proper second by Commissioner Pickens. Any further discussion on Item B? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Pose like sign. The ayes have it. Commissioner Rawls, Item E on your Agenda is the Tourist Development, page 97 or 96 in your Agenda.
So taking a look at this, I'm a little bit concerned. And I've expressed this in the past with, you know, the way we spend our money. They, the TDC approved a $25,000 grant for the Palaca Young Professionals for Blue Crab Festival. And I'm assuming this is Blue Crab, it says for 2021 budget, but is there gonna be a Blue Crab Festival this year? This is the one that they're doing in February or September, rather?
September.
Okay. I just, it, if the money, if all that money goes to advertising, I guess it's a good thing. But I don't think I've ever seen an award this high before for a festival like that. And I wonder what this does to the other festivals that come in and request money. You know, they don't have a proven track record to say they're gonna, especially in that time of year. You know, you've got Biketoberfest going on, competing against that. You've got the car shows and stuff that start to fire up around that time of year. I just, I'm not saying I'm not in favor of the $25,000. I just think it's a high bar to set for that group. And I wonder what we do to, you know, you take a look at something like Catfish Festival. Those guys pack in a bunch of people and serve a bunch of people in that one-day event, and it really does a lot of good for the community, especially in the south end of the county. And then looking at the Bass Tournament, I've had a heartburn with this since before I got elected. You know, having to pay a marketing company $75,000 that owns the tournament to get them to bring the tournament to the St. John's River. You know, we're, it just doesn't sit well with me that we take taxpayers' dollars and give it to a private, for-profit corporation.
Oh, taxpayer dollars.
You know, the money is derived from the bed tax from the TDC. It's absolutely taxpayers' dollars. But spending over 100, you look at $115,000 that we'll spend to put on this Bass Tournament, when, what do we pay Wolfson's to bring theirs in? What do we pay the other tournaments that come in? And I think, you know, from an equity perspective, they should be paying us because they come in, they host their event, you know, right here at our riverfront, use our facilities, use our roads. But we have to pay them more than $100,000 a year to bring this event. I just don't see the value proposition. I've taken a look, a while back, I had been, Matt Reynolds was the Deputy Administrator. Had him pull me together, pull together the year-over-year bed tax collections. And what I determined was that in a year that there was the Bass Tournament, the taxes weren't any higher collected than the year, the next year. And then there was a year where you have a tournament the next year, but you don't see any spikes at all. They just stay kinda flat until Georgia Civic starts building their paper machine, and then someone electric puts their thing on. These guys tie up every hotel room that's available. But you don't see the parking lots full of Bass boat trailers and fishermen like you would expect after spending $115,000 or whatever. I know a couple of years ago it was $96,000, and I think this year was a little over $100,000 as well, but that's my concern.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Adamsak?
I share a little bit of this similar sentiment, but not exactly. I think we need to start looking at, you know, maybe talking with Dana and whoever's running this, and being a little more strategic with this money. There are some other options in statute in our ordinance that could be done with this money, including convention-type things and other things that would be longer-lasting than one-time, basically, activities. I do think for Bass Masters, the amount of money that we spend, if it was spread to more smaller groups, I think we would see actually more results, so maybe take part of that away in future years and spread it to more things. I mean, we have a group of people that came in from Southern Florida with dual bicycles that used almost as many hotels as what Bass Masters brought, and we did nothing. I mean, we weren't aware of it, but they're coming back in October, and I think they plan to come back biannually for now till eternity as long as we keep having great trails and other things. So I just would like to see us be a little more strategic with the funds, if it's just a subset of those funds, so to speak, and maybe find another partner with Bass Masters to split that money up a little bit and get some of that off to maybe the, some other type events that are smaller that will get people here on a more rotational basis. So we're filling hotels throughout the year, not just one-time events.
Thank you, Commissioner Adamsak. Commissioner Turner?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, number one, everybody has the same opportunity to apply. If the people from South Florida don't apply, they can't give them any money. It's not the job of the TDC to go out and recruit people to come apply. It's, the programs are there. They give them the information if they want them. It's there. So the Chairman of our Board is also the Chairman of the TDC, so it's not like we have no representation on the TDC. We do the Chairman of this Board and Chairman of that Committee every year. And like I said, they have to apply. The program was put in place to do this. It's a bed tax money. You can, I understand. But the program was put in place to do this exact thing, expand economic development and grow the bed tax. So yeah, I guess theoretically, Commissioner Rawls is true. It is taxpayers' money. But it mostly comes from bed tax, from other people renting hotel rooms and stuff. So, yeah, the, it's taxpayers' money. If, unless we do away with the program, then there's no money at all to do these kinda things. I understand that it's easy to sit up here and arm-check quarterback or Monday morning quarterback, or whatever you want to call it, the TDC, but you can only give them, they can only give out the money that was applied for. I don't know that anybody was turned down where they, Mr. Chairman?
I wasn't, yeah, they were not.
You didn't make that one, okay, so...
Yeah.
But everybody has the same option to go and ask for the money and ask, and apply for the grants in front of them. So, you know, I understand that the TDC has been a very tricky point for some of the Commissioners up here ever since they've been here, but I'm still for what they do. We charge bed tax. Mostly out-of-town people pay that tax, not local people unless you go spend a night at a hotel. And then, and then on top of that, you, they take the money and try to use it for economic expansion of Putnam County. Could we find a better way to do it? Yeah, maybe. But the thing is, I don't understand how we could, we could find a better way to do it unless those people apply for that. I don't see how we can do that. So, you know, I understand that every time that something from the TDC or the Chamber hits the Agenda that we're gonna have to have a talk about how terrible it is and what have you. But I think they're doing a good job. I do. The Chamber does not have anything to do with this other than they facilitate the program. They're not even a member of the TDC, unless I'm missing something.
No, you're not.
And so, you know, but as soon as the Chamber's name on it, we're gonna talk about it. But that's fine. I have no problem with that, but let's just keep this in perspective. If you apply, you get to stand in front of a subset of members in the community that you can ask to give you grants for advertising, and there's certain things that has to be done with it. I do think the Bass tournaments are a good thing to come to town. If you don't want them to come to town anymore, then just go on and say that, because they're not coming unless you pay them money. That's the end of the story. And it, and there's other communities waiting in line to have them too. So if you don't want them here, all you ought to do is create a controversy, and you won't see them anymore. You won't have the national advertisement and the national set of people that pay attention to that. So, Mr. Chairman, I'll relinquish the floor at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Rawls?
So how many Bass tournaments do we pay for every year, besides this one?
We can get you a copy of that through the-
I think the answer is none, but I see Ms. Julia Linton sitting out there. She's the Vice President of Tourist Development. Maybe she can answer that question, but I think the answer is none. So what I, I think what rubs me wrong as a taxpayer is that we pay for their insurance. We pay for hotel room stays. We pay for meals. When the folks come in from the Wolfson's Tournament, we're not paying for them to stay in hotels. We're not paying for them to go eat dinner. You know, and if I'm wrong, I would like somebody to stand up and tell me I'm wrong. But why are we paying for the insurance for that promoter? We, the promoter comes down and gets paid $75,000 just to show up, but then we have to pay their fee to the City of Palaca for the event. We pay for their insurance. They can sell beer so they can have their general liability or whatever liability insurance it is that they have to cover. That's all paid for out of our taxes, not by that company that makes a profit every year by hosting these tournaments. So I just, you know, I'm all in favor of Bass tournaments. I think the more, the better. But in one of my complaints, even with something like Wolfson's, when they come in, they don't pay to use our boat ramp. It's just, hey, use our, use our infrastructure, you know, for free, but with this other group, we gotta pay them to come down.
Use the city's ramp.
So it's, well, whether it's our boat ramp or the city boat ramp, they're still using roads to get here. But the point is, is that the money, to me, is going the wrong direction. Instead of them paying the citizens of Palaca to use their facilities and paying for their own insurance, their own ice, their own golf cart rentals, we're doing that. We're literally paying for all that and then some. That's all. That's what the $115,000 is for. But we don't reach out to the other tournaments that bring in more fishermen and it, excuse me, and say, "Hey, we're gonna throw some cash away to bring your event to town." This is the bass fishing capital of Florida. This is the bass fishing capital of the world, probably, and people want to come here and fish. So one question I do have, Mr. Suggs, how much money currently is in the TDC budget?
I'll have to, we'll have to pull that information for you, Commissioner. We can do that. We can have it to you by this afternoon.
I think instead of just throwing this on the consent Agenda, what we should do in the future, or even now, is pull this and put it to a workshop so we can discuss it at a workshop. Take a look at how much money, number one, is available. Last time I looked, we had over a million dollars in that fund. So I'm not saying that this isn't a smart investment. I just don't know that it is because I can't see any return on the investment. There's a lot of, you know, the, you read in the newspaper, "Well, there's over $2 million worth of advertising," because ESPN, when they put this thing on, they say, "We're fishing in the St. John's River," or Fox Sports News, whoever's doing it that year. Every time they say Putnam County or Palaca, we're getting benefit from it. But if the benefit doesn't translate to tax dollars, and the taxes are being paid by people that are here working on projects like the Seminole Generator or Georgia Civic's paper machine, then it doesn't really make any sense at all because we're just paying money out with no expectation of getting money back in. It's not an investment at that point. It's just a, we're paying for somebody to come in here and have a lot of fun. I personally would like to see money go towards the flying-in that the City of Palaca puts on at the airport. Events like the Catfish Festival, the Blue Crab Festival, the Isaiah Festival. Spend marketing dollars on those festivals, get more people to come in here. They come in from out of town, stay in the hotels, spend their money at restaurants. You know, we make money with vendor fees when the city sets up and collects vendor fees. So it's win-win for the community, but in this case, the money's going the wrong direction, in my opinion, but it-
Thank you, Mr. Rawls. Mr. Adamsak, final word?
Yeah, so I agree with some of what Mr. Rawls said, and I disagree with a little bit of what Mr. Turner said. So as far as them not seeking out applicants for the money or for events, I think that's absurdly wrong, and hopefully I don't misunderstand the statute, but I think that's why we have a director there that hopefully that's part of what they're doing, is they're going out and trying to find new events or a new activity that happened this year that maybe someone self-sponsored, and next year they go out and they say, "Hey, you guys did a really good job with it on your own. How can we help?" And then they decide whether they want to apply or not, and Dana's shaking her head, "Yes," so I think some of that is happening. So I think we definitely need to do a better job of that, and I think that's progressed since I've been in the county. From what I've seen, it has progressed some. I have no problem with the Chamber of Commerce. I think they're an absolutely necessary entity in any county or local government, local geography. I actually wish there was a few Chamber of Commerces within our county to represent some of the towns and cities. But this county chooses to do it with one centralized one. Whether that's a good choice or not, I have no idea. But, so I'm for this. I just, like I said, if there is 1-point-something million dollars out there, there is some strategic things that can be done, and we need to start going that way and thinking about some things beyond just events here and there, how to expand that to all parts of the county, which some of that is happening, and to be a little more strategic with it. And that's, I guess that's all I'm saying, is by strategic, I mean whether you're funding, I mean, there's a thing to build in the TDC money. You could build a minor league baseball stadium. Not that we're gonna do that in Palaca, but there are other things in there. There's Convention Center could be built. There are several things. So just, I'd like to see us start looking down some of those paths, especially if we have 1-point-something million dollars and we're only using a small percentage. As far as what Mr. Rawls, the part that I do agree with is, I'd like to see when these type of things are presented that we say, "We have $1.2 million. We'll have $1.12 million when we're done," just as part of- have one point one, two million dollars when we're done, just as part of the presentation that we get before we vote on these things.
Good. And as a chairman, I can make that happen. Mr. Turner, final.
Uh, my final thing is, I'd like to make a comment that, you know, if we want to change how we do the TDC, that's one thing, but to, to use this this morning to change that, I think that's just not fair to anybody to put them on the spot. With that being said, Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve item E on the consent agenda.
Proper motion by Commissioner Turner?
I'll second.
Proper second by Commissioner Pickens. Any further quick discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign.
Aye.
The ayes have it, and this passes, thank you. I have my own comments about it, but I think everybody knows how I feel about bringing national recognition to Putnam County. I've watched it online, I've watched some of the bass tournaments around the, the country, and I think, um, it's very fulfilling to watch our bass masters fishing beside docks of people you know, and people are sitting in snow up in, up north in Colorado going, wow, they're in shorts in Putnam County. And, um, I think it, it gives us the good light. So, at that moment, we're gonna take a little five-minute break, so then we'll be back at, um, ten thirteen. Thank you. Meeting back to order, Board of County Commission meeting, so if everyone will find their seats. And, um, I neglected to say that two of our items on the next item B and item C have been moved to the 505 meeting today, uh, due to the fact that they were advertised for 505, and there is an amended, and a, a amended agenda that went out yesterday stating that. So, item B and item C of item seven, um, is gonna be moved to 505 this evening, because that is our second reading of that. Okay, our next item is item A, page one ninety-four in your agenda, and, uh, this is a public hearing. Uh, let me, let me address that real quick. A public hearing is basically a time where, um, we're going to hear from staff. We don't serve, we kind of don't serve as commissioners at that point, we're supposed to serve as judges, and we're supposed to not hear, we're supposed to hear the evidence and not have our mind made up, because the, the zoning change runs with the land and not, and we're not supposed to know the use, because it's unfair for that to take place. Because if the Board of County Commissioners today decide to do one thing or another, the zoning board, the zoning goes with the land, the land does the nation, doesn't matter what the use is at that point. So, I know some of y'all are looking at me like I've got a third eye, but trust me, that's what's, you're fixing to hear that, and we're gonna sit in that, we're supposed to sit in that non-bias opinion phase where we just hear what the land use is good for and what takes place after that. So, I hope I didn't muddy the water too much. Wendy, you can clean it up if you want me, if you decide you need to. We're gonna turn it over to staff to introduce that. Mr. Adams, Zach, you have a question?
No, I have a statement, um, and I may need the attorney's help in doing this, because I've never done it before, but, um, I have been receipt of, I guess it's ex parte communication in reference to this, it was, began prior to, my understanding it was gonna be before us, um, so I just want to acknowledge that. I don't know the names of all the people that contacted me, um, and it will not affect my decision-making in this process.
Well, why don't we go ahead and do that before, Commissioner Turner, have you had any ex parte communication?
I have multiple, but it will not affect my decision.
Mr. Rawls?
If emails count as, uh, communication, yes, but, um, they will not affect my decision.
Mr. Pickens?
And multiple emails are responding to.
Um, and I spoke with briefly with one of the, um, planning commission members, but it won't affect my decision.
And I kind of, I'll disclose that I had almost started this process with Ms. Robin a long, long time ago, over a year ago, and, um, and it will not affect my decision whatsoever either, okay? So, Wendy, you got, you got the floor.
Good morning, Wendy Hickey, Planning and Development Services. Just as the chairman had mentioned, this is a, this is a project that had gone to the planning board, just for a little background, a year ago. So, we're, we're closing the loop at this point, because the applicant had requested for an in-person board meeting, and waiting to after the COVID issue had dissipated. So, I'm gonna start with the ordinance, an ordinance of the county of Putnam, state of Florida, amending the, the official zoning map for the Put, for Putnam County Incorporated into Article Two of Putnam County Land Development Code, Ordinance twenty-five dash eighteen, providing for severability and an effective date. This is case number R twenty zero zero four. This is for, um, at, the application is from Safe Pet Rescue Incorporated, it's a zoning map amendment from C two to C three for point eight four acres, which is inclusive of, inclusive of two parcels. It's located eight nineteen and eight twenty-one, South Moody Road, Palaca. The parcels are designated CR, which is commercial on the future land use map. The parcel, of course, is eight point eight four acres, it's an existing commercial building and warehouse on the northern parcel, it's paved parking on the southern parcel. The request is in response to a codes case regarding the running of a kennel in a C two zoning district. The present zoning will not allow a kennel. The requested zoning, C three, also doesn't allow kennel by right, it does allow the opportunity to go for a special use permit before the zoning board of adjustments, which, which is not a guarantee. At this point, it has to go before that.
Okay, I'm gonna interrupt you for just a minute, so the audience understands fully. If the board today decides to change the zoning from C two to C three, that does not automatically give Safe an opportunity to have kennels on the property. They have to go before a citizens board called the zoning board of adjustment, and under that, that board can either approve or deny. If they, if there is an appeal, that appeal goes to circuit court, it does not come to the Board of County Commissioners. So, just so everybody knows that, Wendy, you may proceed.
Correct. This is the air, um, you can't see, but I know, um, the board can't, this is the aerial of the property, future land use zoning district. The comprehensive plan is commercial, so it allows this use, it allow.
You gonna see this on our screen? I don't mean to interrupt. Good deal, thank you.
Okay, uh, I'll go back so you can see where the location. Um, this is the aerial of the site, the future land use, which is commercial, and the current zoning district, which is C two. Um, the commercial category of the future land use map allows for all different kinds of land uses that are commercial in nature, and this, a C three does fit in that with that land use. The property is zone C two, that district is a lighter zoning district, so it, it has a lot of similarities to the C three, but it's a little less intense, and you don't even have the opportunity to go before the board, for the board, zoning board of adjustments to get that little bump up for a special use. As I said before, the C three allows for a mixture of light and medium intensity commercial uses, specifically a kennel would be allowed in C three upon the approval of a special use permit. The staff finds that the rezoning to C three for this property is consistent with the comprehensive plan, it's consistent with the local requirements for C three zoning, and compatible with the surrounding land use. Again, we're not just looking at that use as a kennel, we're use just generally a C three zoning district. Staff recommend, had recommended approval to the planning board on June tenth, twenty twenty, that's how long ago this went to the board. And at that time, the board had voted five to two recommending denial. So, if you have any additional questions, or if I can help you with anything.
Commissioner Rawls, you have discussion?
So, is it, is it possible to get a special use permit under C two?
No.
Okay. Is this a kennel, or is this a, an adoption center?
I really do, it, it, I think the applicant would have to explain their, their use.
Here's where my question goes, there used to be a pet store right over here next to the Chinese restaurant.
Mm-hmm.
This is C two. If, if they, if they're running a pet store, or they're adopting out or selling animals, whatever you want to call it, isn't that different than running a kennel?
Unfortunately, I think our, I believe our code is silent on pet store, and it's listed as kennel.
So, then is that something that this board needs to take up? Should we not, um, take action at this time and then get a definition of what a pet store is? Because you also have veterinarian offices that actually run kennels.
Commissioner, if I may.
You may.
The, so, the, the definition of a kennel in the code is any commercial place of business where three or more domesticated animals over six months of age are kept for sale, grooming, breeding, or overnight boarding. Um, it's my understanding that all of those activities are taking place at this, uh, location. Um, we, we would not consider this a pet.
Okay, now, listen, we're not going to do that, please. Go ahead, Gabriel.
Thank you, sir. Um, so, we would treat a pet store as a retail use, but because there's a specific definition in the code for a kennel, then we would have to consider it as a kennel.
So, back to my original question then, is this a mistake made by staff and the boards previous to us in warding, where you cannot even have a veterinarian office open up because they board animals? I know I've had my animal boarded, um, in, in the past at a, at a veterinarian office, um, because they would also not fall under, um, the, the zoning that's required. It sounds, it sounds like we've created a wormhole and a problem for ourselves, and maybe we need to go back and make some corrections before we even hear this case, is my opinion.
Um, to answer your question about whether it's a mistake, I don't believe it's a mistake. I, I do believe it was intentional to call out kennel because of the, the noise and the other, uh, potentially adverse effects of a kennel.
So, is every, is every veterinarian office a kennel?
No, sir, no.
Okay.
So, a kennel would be where you primarily house, the, the primary use of it would be, um, the housing of dogs or cats, the veterinary office, the primary use there is the treatment, uh, medical treatment.
But they also have boarding, where you can just go on vacation and leave your pet for a week.
So, if, if a, I would say that if a vet's office has, excuse me, uh, boarding associated with it, then we would have to review that as a special case. Um, I don't know that every, every vet's office has that associated with it, but, um, if it's a vet's office alone, then I do believe C two would allow, uh, that office.
It sounds to me like we need to be a little less broad in our definition of kennel. It's, it just, it sounds to me like we've, the, the, the commission in the past and staff have, um, made a mistake by having such a, a broad, uh, definition, it, it just seems like everything fits into the term kennel, if you're running an adoption center. So, technically, we can't have our adoption center opened up on the corner of, um, Sixth Street and, um, Reed Street where we have. on the corner of Sixth Street and Reed Street where we have it over by the old B O C C that ourselves are, we would be complicit in break of the law. So I think we need to go back to work on this one and get some definitions fixed.
Well, city's ordinance may be different.
What was that? Sorry.
That's true.
Under the city could be different.
Oh. I'm good right now.
Okay, Mr. Adams, Zach, you're next.
I guess I'm, I'm just going to take a broader look at it, and I kind of agree with Mr. Rawls on that, but I didn't think of it like that. I, I don't object to any of the, the C 3 uses in that location, even if it. And at first, my ask was to you guys is, is there a way to apply this where it only applies to this owner? We established we can't do that. But any of these other uses in that particular location don't bother me. And the fact that this one needs a special use permit, and the ones that might be controversial also need a special use permit. I really think that really leaves my concerns a lot, so I guess that's all I'll say.
Mr. Turner?
I had this conversation with Mr. Seoffey and Mr. Quintez a few days ago, and I, I can, I'm going to shock the room by saying I completely agree with Commissioner Rawls on this one.
Okay, all right, let's not pass the stars. Throw the minion to him.
I think, I think that we need, I think we need to work on this and massage this a little bit, I really do. Number one, I think that it should have been fine if there's no outside kennels, and I don't believe there is, they might walk their dog, but there's no outside boarding, outside kennels that I could see. And so when I drove by and looked at it, I didn't go in, I just drove by and looked at it. So I believe that if it's going to be called a kennel, there needs to be outside kennels or it's more of a pet store or an adoption center or whatever the case may be. Now, that's my opinion. So I think that we, we can move this forward today by passing it to C 3. I don't see any issue why we couldn't pass it to C 3 today. And because any, they're still going to have to go to the ZBOA, and then they can put, the ZBOA can put special conditions on it through a supplemental use permit that you can't do through a zoning issue. So they can go in there like a PUD, for instance, and they can say, okay, you're going to put soundproofing in there or you're, I don't know what they're going to put on there. It's ZBOA, not us, but they could make conditions. You either meet the conditions or you're not there anymore. That's just the end of the story. So, and it's, there's no political in it. It's all straight up because it's a board of your peers. It's not a, it's not a straight political issue as much as it would be coming before the board. But then I agree with Mr. Rawls. I think we need to hear this, but we're fixing to. We're fixing to hear this within the next year in the land development code. I'm assuming, that ain't completely blew up because Troy Allen left. So I'm assuming that's still progressing to get on the bid, to get the bid out, to get the consultant on board to start with the land code pretty quick. So with that being said, that'd be a good opportunity to look at it along with the other list of things that we've talked about over the years and the last few years that needs to be changed during the land development code. But to move this forward, this commissioner doesn't have any problem giving them a C 3 for their special use permit. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Turner. Mr. Pickens?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Harvey. Gabriel, did you say that a veterinarian office would be okay in C 2?
Excuse me, I'll take a look at that very quickly because that's, I didn't see it on the list in C 3 or C 2. And then also, I think you mentioned about a retail location.
Now, is, if they're doing adoptions, is there money change hands with these adoptions? They do? Okay. Okay. All right, but that's, that's a service not actually paying for a pet. So you still would consider that a retail because money is being exchanged?
Oh, well, I, I was referring to the, a, a pet store with regard to the retail. So no, I would not consider them a retail location.
All right, but is, is a veterinarian office, is it? I hate to put you on the spot.
No, no problem, no problem. I, I think that we would, I'm not sure that, that vet is actually called out in our code.
This is just another one of those situations that we're going to have to take a look at when we go through land development.
I did a quick search on our entire code, and I didn't see any mention of vet or veterinarian. So my first inclination would be to consider it an office, which is allowed in C 2, because I don't see anything else. And associated uses like a hospital and other medical uses are allowed in C 2. So I can see us permitting a veterinarian to go in by right in C 2.
But if they have or not, if I may, they have to have overnight boarding, which everyone I've ever seen did, offer overnight boarding, then they just went into the kennel.
I think that if it's a very ancillary, so if it's an ancillary use, it's a very small portion of their business, and we wouldn't consider it a kennel. But if, if their business model is mostly boarding, then, or maybe, I'm not sure what the figure would be, but maybe 50% or more, then we would have to consider it a kennel.
All right, I think some of these questions can go to the applicant in just a moment because I think that'll clear some up. So Commissioner Adams, Zach, do you have any questions for staff?
I do. Can you reread the definition of kennel, please?
Yes.
And slowly, please.
Is this our definition?
Yes, our definition.
Thank you.
Section 45-813 of the land development code. And a kennel means any commercial place of business where three or more domesticated animals over six months of age are kept for sale, grooming, brooding, or, excuse me, breeding, or overnight boarding. Kennel may include, okay, so there is a portion here that says kennel may include a veterinary facility and nonprofit rescue facilities if such uses include facilities that meet this definition of kennel. So any veterinary facility that has boarding would be considered a kennel.
So in this case, it's my understanding that they don't do any of those things for commercial purposes?
Well, the nature being a commercial place of business.
Right, but they're not actually boarding, they're not having someone keep their animal there and receiving a payment for it. At least I, I guess we'll ask when they come up. They're not offering grooming services to the outside public. They, they have to clean the dogs that are there, obviously. I don't think they're doing any of those items any differently than, I don't think, I don't think they fit that definition personally because they're not actually receiving a transaction based on those things.
With regard to sale.
I guess maybe the attorney could, could help me with that.
We can ask that question.
And the reason I ask is because if, if they don't meet any of those, if they're not by definition a kennel, then C 2 would be fine for their use.
Okay, but I think we need to hear from the applicant on what their, their business plan looks like. That's the key here, because I have some questions along those lines, too.
Right.
Okay, Mr. Rawls, will you finish up and we'll go to the applicant?
I just want to say, this, this is, reminds me of a situation happened to me where my wife gave me a seven-foot-wide Texaco sign, 1960 Texaco sign. I put it on the side of a building, and I had a 1958 Tokin gas pump out front. And somebody filed a complaint that I had a commercial building in my backyard. It was my man cave. So I told the planner at the time, you really don't want to take me to code enforcement because it's going to be embarrassing for you. And he had a very embarrassing day that day because when I asked him to read the definition of a sign, I told him that I would, I would lament and I would take the sign down when every menorah, it's a boy, happy birthday, and any other celebration of anything came down because everything meets the definition of a sign. And I only say this to say that I think we need to be a little less literal, actually, a lot less literal, and a little more flexible in what we're doing to be able to work with our community, and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Okay, good. I'm going to, I'm going to.
Yes, sir, I just want to say one thing. Let's keep in mind here before we start jumping up and down on Gabriel and Wendy. They weren't even here when all this went down last year. They're trying to take a situation and move it forward the best they can in a, in a very good manner. So before we start jumping up and down on them.
This is 100% us. This is us.
They're just finishing somebody else's steel off.
All right. Thank you for your presentation. Now, I want to ask, who is going to represent SAFE today on this? Okay, because I got some speaker cards, but I want the applicant to come up and, and explain to us what the process.
Are we limping in this at all? Are we timing this?
Probably not for this, but I'm going to comment.
Commissioners, I'm Carol.
There's a gentleman standing up. Sir, are you with these people? Do you want to? Okay, have a seat. We'll get to you in just a moment.
He's just standing in support.
Okay, you're just standing up. Okay. But I imagine everybody wants to stand up and support, and so, you know. But it's not, it's not necessary right now. Let the applicant speak, and then we'll get to that, I promise. Applicant, go ahead and speak. Give your name and address for the record, please.
Okay, my name is Carol Museline, and my address is 122 Old Brick Road, East Palaca, Florida. And I'm on the board of SAFE, and I was on the board of the Humane Society for over 25 years. We are now SAFE, and meaning saving animals from euthanasia. And when they just gave out those awards, lifesaving awards, well, let me tell you, let me just tell you, we have saved in just last year, just last year, we have adopted out 2127, 2,127 animals. Plus, 484 went up to northern counties, Massachusetts, New Hampshire, New York, because they have spay and neuter laws. They need it.
I want to ask you a question.
Yes.
We've got to keep this to the, to the land.
Okay.
I want to talk about the land and the rezoning request. Can you speak to that today? I, I appreciate the backstory of all the emails. I really love that, but, but we're here today to talk about the land.
Right, right. Well, Tina knows what we do out there. She's our vet tech, and she runs the place out there. So she can tell you exactly how it's run and the land, what it's used for.
Okay, Tina, is that your name and address for the record?
Okay, I'm Tina Hershey. I live at 202 Old Woods Road in Alarcon, Florida, 32148. I am the manager at SAFE in Palaca.
All right, so let's talk about the land. Okay, so we're trying to go from C 2 to C 3, and what's the reasoning for that?
We were told we weren't allowed to have the C 2, so we needed the C 3 to house the dogs overnight.
You need to ask that different.
I do. I know, I have.
Yeah, I think you need to ask that different. What, do you mind if I?
No, I do not mind.
Your operation, the way that you operate, do you have outside, things like, do you have any outside kennels?
No, we have a play yard.
Okay.
That each dog takes time outside.
That's fine. That's the kind of questions that I think we need is about not, about how you actually operate.
Okay.
Do you bring every dog in your whole organization in there or only just a few that you're wanting to adopt at the time?
We, we have a set number, yep.
I noticed somewhere in the paperwork that I read that there was something about, that you were in the process of trying to get some more noise blocking stuff put in for the neighbors or whatever. Have you made any progress with that at all?
No, not yet. We just, we just got the pavement redone in the parking lot. We put up the fence and had it painted. And now we're working on the barn. We're going to try to soundproof it so that we can take the dogs out there.
So you have a barn out back that you keep the dogs in other than just in the front?
There's nothing in there at this time.
Okay, but at one time, there were kennels out back. What, weren't there?
No, not at this facility. No, sir.
But there was storage back there? Is that what, okay.
Yes, yes.
All right, so the question here on the table is this. You bring, you're a thrift store, basically. You're a retail store out front, correct? That you sell?
We have nothing inside.
You have nothing inside anymore? It used to be that. Okay.
Yes.
So now you just bring animals in from the Hollister location?
No, usually they're from either animal control or they are dumped and abandoned or they're strays.
So every day, you go out and you get, bring these animals?
Not every day.
All right, explain the operation then.
Okay, so we have right now 10 dogs there.
Okay.
Okay, so as we have adoptions, more dogs come in.
Okay, so at the end of the day, when you bring the dogs in in the morning, what do you do with the dogs or animals at night?
They stay overnight.
They, so they are kennelled there?
Yeah.
Okay, inside the building?
Inside the building, yes, sir.
All right, that, that brings to light what I was looking for.
Well, that, that really helps, Mr. Chairman, in the fact that now we understand. But even now that we know that, we, it's not really critical of what we're talking about because it's all about land use and what can be done in C 3. Not, not, not exactly whether they fit it or not at this point because then they're going to, if they are successful today, then they'll move to ZBOA. And at that point, ZBOA can actually ask these questions and put restrictions on them and whatever. But as far as land, as the zoning and what we're discussing today, we can't put any restrictions on it. It's either C 3 or not C 3. That's what we are doing today, so.
All right, is there anything else you'd like to share with us on, on the zoning? I understand the animals. We all get that.
Yeah.
But, okay, so, all right, all right, good. Mr. Adams, Zach, you have the floor, sir?
Do you house animals overnight for payment?
No, sir, we do not.
Do you groom animals overnight or groom animals for payment?
No, sir.
Do you do anything with animals for payment as far as the outside bringing their animal to have you do something with it?
No.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Next speaker, I guess we're going to go in favor of the application, then we'll go in opposition of the application. Nancy Hinton, if you will, keep your comments to zoning, okay? That's what we're talking about. I don't try to, I'm not trying to be heavy-handed. I'm really not. We just, well, our conversation, we all, we all get that, but it's, it's land use, okay?
I don't really understand the issue with zoning. This is a rescue, not so much as a kennels, you know, a kennel, so to speak. Whereas a kennel is for breeding and this, that, and the other thing. This is a rescue. It's far from breeding. They spay, they neuter. And the money that they do receive is the cost for the spay. And personally, this could not come in the worst possible time for them to move because right now you're dealing with pandemic pets. You're dealing with people who have gone out and bought and adopted or whatever these dogs and cats when school was closed and everybody's locked up. Now the pandemic is, you know, coming towards the end, schools back up. You've got these people with animals that they don't want anymore. They didn't want them. They just wanted something, you know, to keep their kids company. And if you look around, Putnam County is growing. This isn't going to be the first time this is going to come up. Putnam County is growing. More people, you're going to have more pets. And as far as your zoning is concerned and your definition between what's a kennel and what's not, apparently that is the issue because people cannot distinguish the difference between a rescue and a kennel. We're not selling these animals, you know, so to speak, as a profit. The money they get is for the animals. It's helping to keep down the number of euthanasia. It's helping to keep down the number of strays. I mean, right now, Satsuma alone, a friend of mine, has had five of her chickens killed from dogs that people are dumping. Cats, you know, I mean, this is, this is a problem with Putnam County. I've been a resident of Putnam County for four years. Prior to that, I was born and raised in St. Augustine. And I can tell you right now, Putnam County is one of the worst that I've ever lived in, including Duval County, as far as the welfare of their animals. And like I said, this cannot come as the worst time. So, I mean, the definition between a rescue and a kennel as far as your zoning goes, you know, yeah, there's a fine line there. Kennel is not a rescue, although a rescue may have kennels. But it's a rescue, sir. It's not something that profit. You understand what I'm saying? I mean, I'm speaking for the animals. Y'all worrying about zoning. I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. We have to be about land. All right, that's the, that's the end of my blue card speakers. Is there anybody else would like to?
I'd like to make a statement quickly.
Mr. Adams, Zach?
I think that we're considering the wrong thing completely. I think that we're considering the wrong thing completely because if we're currently, we're, you said we're zoning veterinarian offices that we know actually receive payment for, for housing animals overnight. I mean, I've paid mine, um, as C2, as an office. I, I think in, this actually meets that definition even better than a veterinarian's office does because they're basically the office of a nonprofit agency who happens to, to do the work of the nonprofit, but under no commercial objective to raise funds through basically housing animals on behalf of the, the outside patrons or to sell anything or to sell grooming services or anything else like that. So I think this actually more meets the definition of C2 under office than a, a veterinarian's office does.
Mr. Chairman.
So I, I'd like, I don't know how we do this, but I, I'd like to throw this out and allow the use as a C2 as a, a not-for-profit office.
Mr. Quinton, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Um, Mr. Chairman, thank you. So I, I don't think, with all due respect, I, I don't think that there's a question here on whether this is actually a kennel. Just because the definition does include nonprofit rescue facilities in the kennel definition, so.
Yeah, but u- under that, a kennel is considered a business, so they're not an act of kenneling dogs. They're not in the business of kenneling animals.
Well...
That would require a payment to come to them for that purpose.
So regardless of whether they're making a profit, they, if they operate, regardless of whether their funds for operation are coming from pro- uh, individual citizens or grants or anything else, it would still be considered a kennel and, and a commercial facility because of the nature, not so much because of whether they're making a profit or not. The nature of the, of the use.
Yeah, so the nature of a veterinarian's office that has a facility that can house a dog overnight is they're actually pursuing a payment and they're pursuing people to come do that. They're in no way pursuing anyone ever to bring them, their animal into that place as a kennel, as an operating kennel. So I don't agree with that definition, but I guess we have to defer to, and I guess, I'll ask the attorney, is that?
I don't think we have the authority to just throw that out.
No, we can't just, again, this is a land use issue.
Well, what is our authority, I guess, Rich?
We can always change land uses, but that takes an amendment. Mr. Commandant?
I mean, there's, there's an ordinance before you as to whether or not you're going to approve or deny the request to change, to change land use. That's it, that's your authority.
That's our authority.
So if, if we denied it though, could we also make a motion to accept this particular use under C2, given the fact that it's a not-for-profit office?
No, because that's not before you.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, Mr. Rawls, then I'm going to open it up. We got one more blue card and I did forget that. I apologize.
Like I said at the beginning, I think that this needs to be workshopped. Um, I think the reason that I asked you to look at veterinarians, I looked it up, and my concern is we're fixing to step into a territory where we're going to dispense disparate treatment, we're going to allow it for one group but not another. I think we need to slow down a little bit. Whether we change the zoning or not shouldn't matter. I agree with Commissioner Adamsack. I think they meet the current zoning because we allow it for every veterinarian office that allows, um, boarding of animals. They also sell medicine. They sell dog food, by the way. Um, you know, what do we do with Petco when they have their animals come in? I mean, they're, we're, we're opening a can of worms up I don't think we need to get into. So, um, I, I think the, just like I fell into a funky situation with the sign ordinance in the city of Palaca, they got that cleaned up. I think we need to do the same thing here.
Thank you, Mr. Rawls. Mr. Rowe, you had a blue card and I did not call on you and I apologize, sir.
Yes, my name is John Rowe. I live at 108 Sunset Point, Palaca, Florida. Um, represent Ganatec Properties and the tenants that we have in the property across the parking lot from Safe Pet. And, um, I am a fan of Safe Pet. I, I have adopted two animals through Safe Pet and their predecessor. I, I think they provide a fantastic service. Um, a lot of my comments have to do with their specific sort, uh, use of the property rather than the zoning, so I think I probably need to reserve those for later when this comes up, although, uh, the definition of a kennel to someone that's not next door to it is probably different than it is to, to somebody that is. I, uh, it sounds like a kennel and any, anyway, I think the rest of my comments have to do with other items that I need to bring up whenever a special use permit, I guess is what they're supposed to ask for now, comes up. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, was there anybody that, before we end the public comment period of this meeting, of this item, is there anybody else that want to speak? Because I don't want to miss, okay. All right, we're going to close the public portion of this and have Commissioner deliberations. Commissioners? Commissioner Rawls, you recognized?
So if this was to be approved today and then we changed the land development code, well, um, and it then is allowed under the land development code as a C2, would they revert back automatically if they applied for their, their special use under C3 and that it, it was allowed under C2? What happened then?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, um, no, sir, it, it would not revert. It would remain as C3. Um, so this, this would be a permanent action and any change would have to be, um, take, uh, they, they would have to bring another, uh, request up.
But my, my concern would be that if, if they decided to get out of the kennel business one day and move into something different, the zoning stays in the property.
It does.
And is that really the best place for C3? You know, maybe it is. You got Wade Cantrell's place right down the street and he works on big trucks and stuff and, no, I don't, that's, that's industrial, so I guess C3 wouldn't be that big of a stretch. So I don't have a, I don't have a problem.
Well, and I, I want to say something before I call on Commissioner Adamsack because as a chair, I don't get a chance to do that often. There's not that much difference between C2 and C3. It really isn't. So when we're trying to keep the discussion on the land, um, and I, and believe, believe me, I, I realize how passionate this, this item is, but it is a land discussion right now. Um, the special use permit does allow arguably or not, the use of kennels. And I mean, that's, that's the process to go through. If this board in the future decides to change that process, then so be it. I'm like, I think there's compelling arguments that I've heard today on C2 and C3, and I think there's compelling arguments on, on do we need to change it or don't need to change it. But I have a question for you before we go much further.
Yes, sir.
Did I understand that this came before us today based on Code's action? Was that what I heard today?
I do believe so, yes, sir.
Okay. And where's that action at now? Are these, are we being fined? I mean, not we, are they, they being?
Cut it off.
Cut it off because they applied for it?
I don't believe so, sir. I, I'm...
When they, no, I, I understand. I think the question is when they seek a remedy that shuts off the Code's case at that time and they've sought a remedy for the situation. So I'm good with...
It stalls it for all intents and purposes and then one, if they receive their special use permit, then the, the case should be closed at that point.
My question to you today, though, and maybe you can answer this, um, if the board decides to leave it at C2 and, and whatever definition that they think that it's allowable, will the Code's case pick back up at that point?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Adamsack?
So my, my biggest concern about this is we, we, we make it C3, they do their special use and they get their special use and they move to a different location and now that special use kennel, would, would that stay with the property after they, they vacated? No? Okay.
So the spe- the special use will sa- stay for a certain number of months, but only if they, i- if the next kennel abides by the, the restrictions of the, imposed by the ZBOA. If, I, I can't remember the number of months right now, but, is it 12 months? Okay. Um, but after the, that time goes by without the use of that spe- or without function of the property with that special use, then it does expire?
Okay.
But the zoning stays on the property.
The zoning stays, yes.
And a condition of the zoning board could be that it falls off immediately when that situation ends.
Yes, sir, that's right.
But it doesn't automatically have a 12-month tail on it.
Correct.
It could be a condition that the ZBO, ZBOA sets on there.
Well, they could, they could set it for, they, they couldn't vary the portion of the code that says that it expires after a certain number of non, of months of non-use of the special use permit, but they could set it to where it, it, it'll run with the business or it'll, it'll expire sooner. They, they just couldn't vary that without a variance request.
Thank you. Mr. Pickens, you have the floor, sir?
I'm not done, I'm sorry. So I just want to say this. I have no problem with that whole plaza being C3, to be honest with you.
I'm sorry, I didn't know you, I called on Mr. Pickens.
He's fine.
Yeah, I just wasn't done.
Okay, thank you. Mr., are you, are you done?
No.
Okay, go ahead.
Um, so... I guess you're saying, would you get done?
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm working on it.
Wave your hand when you're done.
So I, I have no issue with that whole plaza being C3, to be honest with you. Like Commissioner Rawls said, there's the, the guy that works in the heavy trucks, which I assume that has to be C3, um, based on what I just read in the ordinance. Um, so I'm all for this, I guess is what I want to say.
Are you done now?
We definitely need to look at making this use case in C2.
Thank you.
Took you while you had it.
Mr. Pickens?
I, I, I think y'all answered this question, but if they go for a special use permit, how much does that cost?
$750.
Okay, I want to make sure that's, y'all understand that's not free.
$80.
Right. So anyway, but it's, if, when, if they, if they happen to get the special use permit, it's for that specific use and that it, is it, right?
Yes.
You can't transfer it to one or you can't cluster them or anything like this for the one purpose, right?
Yes, sir, that's right. You cannot change the use that the special use permit's issued for.
Okay, and then as we, we talk, the, the, the garage or the truck center that's right behind Mr. Rowe's office, I believe, what is that zone?
Um, I believe, if it's in the same strip center there, then...
Oh, it's behind it going towards the bait store.
If it's behind, then, I, I just looked at all of the zoning there and it's all C2. Um, City of Palaca has some, some of its municipal boundaries adjoining this property, so...
I was going to say, is that, I was just wondering, is it in the city of Palaca? Does anybody know about that?
Everything across the street is.
It's on the same side of the street. It's just going towards the bait store.
Um, but even if it were City of Palaca, I did look at their zoning and they have, right behind it is R3 and then next to it is like C2, but City of Palaca's version, and I'm not familiar with what they allow in C2.
Okay, all right, thank you.
All right, that ends our conversation. Our Commissioner deliberations. The chair will entertain a motion.
Make a motion that we approve the C3 zoning.
A proper motion by Commissioner Rawls that it's consistent.
Okay, sorry, you're okay?
Second.
And proper second by Commissioner Adamsack. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The ayes have it. C3 zoning, thank you very much. Good. Thank you, thank you for what you do too, and I'm sure that all the board members feel the same way and appreciate it for, for that. Um, next item, item 8A, codes enforcement.
First, I want to thank the first in line for the first case.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning.
Good morning. Mr. Moore, let me ask you a question before we get started.
Yes.
Is there any applicants here today with you?
Not that I know of.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you. You may proceed.
First case is, uh, address 114 Maple Lane, Antelac, Florida. Property owner's name is RK Putnam LLC. The original fine amount was $129,704. The total cost of enforcement action is $2,641. Property owner has recently purchased the property. The property is now compliant and he is requesting a fine reduction. If the board approves, we recommend the reduced fine to be paid within 90 days.
Anybody here want to speak in favor of this? Anybody opposed? Applicants not present? Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we reduce the total fine by the $1,800 administrative monthly fee, giving them 90, nine days to pay a total of $841.
Okay, Commissioner.
Already 1,841 dollars. No, eight, 841.
Yes, 841.
Okay, Commissioner Rawls' motion is to approve $841 to pay within 90 days.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Pickens. Any further discussion amongst the board? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, like sign. Next case.
Address is 112 Putnam Avenue. Property owner's name is Javon Davis. Violation was multiple housing violations. The original fine amount was $126,068.50. The total cost of enforcement action is $2,785. The property owner has recently purchased the property. The property is now compliant and the owner's requesting a fine reduction. If the board approves, we recommend the reduced fine to be paid within 90 days.
Okay, this is case number 2,006, 01254. Is the applicant in the building? No. Seeing none. Anybody want to speak in favor of this application? Anybody opposed to this? Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I'll, I'll make the motion that we, um, stay consistent and reduce the Code case 2,006, 01254 by the administrative monthly, uh, 1,770, reducing it to 1,015, uh, within paid in 90 days.
A proper motion by Commissioner Pickens.
Okay.
Proper second by Commissioner Turner. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The ayes have it. Next case, case number 2,011, 00864.
Address is 426 Himalayan Street. Property owner's name is Top Dog Property Solutions LLC. Violation was unsafe mobile home. The original fine amount was $30,022. The total cost of enforcement action was $7,140. The property owner has recently purchased the property. It is now compliant and they are requesting a fine reduction. If the board approves, we recommend the reduced fine to be paid within 90 days.
Applicant here? Anybody want to speak in favor of this application? Anybody opposed? Seeing none. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, make a motion that we reduce the total fine by the administrative cost of $1,150 for total cost of $5990 and give 90 days to pay.
Proper motion by Commissioner Rawls.
Check it.
Second by Commissioner Turner.
I looked at the three, one. What was the total you said? $59.
$5990.
Yeah, because the abatement...
It's got abatement costs in there.
Yeah, I've had to look at that twice.
All right, so we have proper motion, proper second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The ayes have it. Next case.
Case number 2,013, 110. The name was Tamara Piermont. Um, the board approved a fine reduction in the amount of $4,153 to be paid by 6/23/2021. The owner can't meet the deadline and is requesting another 90 days.
Mr. Moore, do you believe that 90 days is enough? Because this is pretty steep fine and we've already given 90 days.
They, they said, they told me that that should be plenty of time. That's, that's what they asked for.
Mr. Chairman, I move we give them 90 days additional time to pay.
Proper motion by Commissioner Turner?
I'll second it.
Proper second by Commissioner Pickens?
It...
Yes?
Have they made any attempt to pay partial?
Not yet, sir.
Applicants not in the room. No one wants to speak in favor or opposed. I don't see anybody running up to do that. So we have a proper motion on the floor, proper second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The ayes have it. Next item, case number 2,017, 00469. Is that right? No. 2,016, 543. Sorry about that, I was getting ahead of myself.
Address is 351 Hickory Nut Trail. The owner's name is Thomas P. Hayes Living Trust and Edwin K. Martin Living Trust. Violation was unsafe structure and care premises. The original fine amount was $24,846.35. Total cost of enforcement action was $2,235. The new owner has gotten the property compliant and is now requesting a fine reduction. If the board approves, we re- recommend the reduced fine to be paid within 90 days.
Okay. Is the applicant in the room? No. Anybody want to speak in favor of this? Anybody opposed? Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I move approval to reduce the fine by $540 to a total of $1,695 with 90 days to pay.
Proper motion by Commissioner Rawls, proper second by Commissioner Turner. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. The ayes have it. Mr. Moore, leaving right along?
Case number 2,017, 469. Address 133 Oak Circle. Property owner's name is Daryl Futch. Violation was unpermitted mobile home. The original fine amount was $30,643.50. Total
Total cost of enforcement action was one thousand, seven hundred and ninety-one dollars. The property owner has recently purchased the property, the property is now compliant, and he is requesting a fine reduction. If the board approves, we recommend the reduced fine to be paid within ninety days.
Mr. Futch is not in the audience. Is there anybody who wanna speak in favor? Anybody opposed? Okay, commissioners?
Uh, make a motion that we reduce the total fine to thirteen fifty-one, drop in the administrative monthly fee and give them ninety days to pay.
Proper motion by Commissioner Rawls, proper second by Commissioner Turner. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign. Next.
Case number twenty seventeen four nine seven. Address is one two one Floridian Club Road. Property owner's name is Down By The River LLC. The violation was unsafe structure and care premises. The original fine amount was eighteen thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars. Total cost of enforcement action was one thousand, eight hundred and thirty-two dollars. Property owner has recently purchased the property, it is now compliant, and they are requesting a fine reduction. If the board approves, we recommend the reduced fine to be paid within ninety days.
Is the applicant in the audience? Seeing not. Is anybody wanna speak in favor? Anybody opposed? Seeing not. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
I'll make the motion that we reduce code case two thousand seventeen zero zero four nine seven and stay consistent and reduce it, the administrative monthly fee of five-ten for a total of thirteen twenty-two if paid within ninety days.
Thank you. Alright, we got a proper motion by Commissioner Pickens, proper second by Commissioner Turner. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, the ayes have it. Next case and final case.
Case number twenty eighteen three one seven. Address is one oh four Pine Forest Circle. Property owner's name is Intervision Homes. The violation was high grass and weeds. The original fine amount was twenty thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty cents. The total cost of enforcement action is one thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Uh, the property owner has recently purchased the property, property is now compliant, and the owner is requesting a fine reduction. The property owner couldn't be here, um, and they did pay, they bought it as a tax deed sale. They paid an overage of fifteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-two dollars and thirteen cents, um, and they were requesting that we consider using that to help some pay the fines. Um, total cost of enforcement action was one thousand, three hundred and seventy-nine dollars.
Mr. Turner?
I'm pretty sure that the money they paid over does not come to us. It's got to go to some, it goes to somebody else. It doesn't go into a tax fund. It goes into, if they try to pay it back to the owner, if they can't find the owner, it's got to be sent to the state or somebody as, as unappropriated funds. We don't-
Yes, sir.
We don't, we don't get, that's not our money. So it doesn't matter if they pay a million more than they owe in taxes, we don't get the money. And the people don't, people don't understand that sometimes.
Yes, sir, we, I did fill out an affidavit because we have a lien and I did receive the money.
Okay.
And that would-
Of course, your lien.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So I'm confused, I've got confused now.
I received the full amount, fifteen, seven seventy-two, thirteen.
Towards the lien on this, so out of a twenty thousand, four hundred and eighteen dollars and fifty cent?
That does not include the fifteen thousand.
Okay, but that goes towards that. So someone saw this lien, someone saw that amount, paid us fifteen thousand dollars towards it.
Yes, sir, they, well, they paid over on the tax deed sale.
The extra money that was paid over and above, that would have normally gone to the state because they had a lien on it. They applied and got the money. So this gentleman that bought this property has already paid fifteen thousand dollars to, over and above what was owed on it, that the tax, what he had to pay for it on the tax deed sale, the minimum bid on the tax deed sale.
Why wouldn't we keep the fine, send him back the rest?
Well, it sounded like a hell of a good idea to me, Commissioner.
Because the original fine's bigger than-
The original fine's just bigger than the fifteen thousand.
Well, so if we stay consistent, I'll make a motion, if we stay, stay consistent, we reduce the fine to one thousand twenty-nine dollars, deduct it from whatever the overages were and refund him the rest of his money? Question mark?
No, I, no.
I don't know how it works.
He paid for it on, on, well, yeah, he purchased the property. We're not, I'm not going, I'm not opening that can of worms.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Saafi, do you wanna muddy the water or do you wanna?
Alright, I'll, I'll retract my motion and make a different motion. I make a motion that we, that we apply the one thousand twenty-nine after we drop the administrative monthly cost to the overage and keep the rest of the money.
Okay, we got a proper motion by Commissioner Rawls?
I'll second that for discussion.
Proper second by Commissioner Turner, open for discussion.
Okay, under discussion, just, I just wanna make sure that I understand what we're doing. We're gonna charge him another thousand bucks, basically, to stay consistent with what we've done, but nothing else changes. Give him ninety days to pay the thousand bucks.
We're, we're gonna deduct it from the overage amount.
Okay, so then, I don't think that's the proper way to handle it then. The proper way to handle it, because of extenuating circumstances, this is not what we've done in the past, so we can vary from our, from our past actions of things we've done, and because they paid a fifteen thousand overage, that Thomas did get his hands on, which normally isn't right, and we can just waive the fine altogether.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, that's not what we said. What you said was you're gonna deduct it from previous monies and that's not what we-
Oh, deduct it from the fifteen, from the overage.
Understand, see, we can't deduct, we already got the overage, so you either, either approve the fine reduction or you waive the fine reduction. That's all we're talking today. I mean, I, I, so I-
Yeah, I'm with you.
Just waive it with the special consideration.
That's what I'm saying, because of special consideration of overpaying like he did and we received the money, just waive the fine.
I'll withdraw my motion in favor of someone else making a more correct motion.
Well, do we, we have a motion, I withdraw the second if he withdraws.
He did.
Clean it up, Terry.
Okay, I'll take a stab at this. I'd say because of previous extenuating circumstances, we just waive this one altogether.
Thank you. We have a proper motion by Commissioner Turner to waive the fine based on extenuating circumstances.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rawls. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like sign, the ayes have it. Mr. Moore, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, guys.
Mr. Saafi, I would have liked to listen to you, but I saw where it was going, so there's no point. Thank you, thank you.
You mean, I'm thinking with the same mind as you.
Can I ask a question real quick?
That's scary.
Is there, is there no way that we could set a policy that when we have this arise, it's just automatically taken care of?
I don't think so. I think it's got to come to the board for a fine reduction.
Okay.
But we can remember what we did and that's the important part. I do wanna say one thing, Mr. Moore, you still, yeah. You know, I think every one of the cases except one was somebody purchased a property. I, I know that the only leverage we have is to put codes cases on people. You've heard me talk about making them so unattractive that people just kinda walk away because the fines are more than the property is for. I wish we could entice with a carrot instead of a stick. I get the fact that we have to use the stick in this case, but again, I think all the cases we heard today were people purchased these properties, and I just wonder if we made our fines so extensive that people just went, I'm outta here, or maybe they were gonna get out anyway. I don't know the answer to that, but, you know, I-
What we're doing is working, Mr. Chairman.
It's working, it is working.
We're cleaning, we don't want to own the land and we're cleaning up the county. What we're doing is working.
It is working.
And so, you know, people are coming into compliance that never considered coming into compliance in, in the past, you know, and, and they're coming in now and because we're doing these fine reductions, but only if they're in compliance. Now, you wanna blow everything up, grant one that's not in compliance. Then you just blow your program up.
I agree.
As long as you make it a contingency like we have, that, you know, that it's got to be in compliance, then people are doing it.
And people are buying these places, you know, knowing that we're going to, all we want's compliance, so I'm, I'm good.
I'm on the tax roll, you betcha.
I'm good. Alright, clerk of the court, Mr. Reynolds, Honorable Matt Reynolds?
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Um, I just wanna thank the, the board for helping organize that farm share event that we've got coming up, uh, this Saturday, but next Saturday, planning to be there, so looking forward to it. And, um, I have nothing else, I will see you guys tomorrow for budget requests.
And don't forget, you gotta sign your employees up who wanna volunteer.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes, I've got flyers out in the office for that.
Are you gonna bring your boxing gloves for tomorrow morning?
Absolutely, sir.
You know, I've been, I've seen in my life, if you carry the sign-up sheet around with you, it helps a little bit more.
It helps a little bit.
So just, just a thought.
Absolutely.
But, uh, we'll talk about that a little more in just a second, too.
Alright.
Alright, good deal. Um, appointments, Mr. Adamsack, do you have any appointments?
I have none.
Mr. Turner?
I have none today, sir.
Mr. Pickens?
I have none.
Mr. Rawls?
I have none.
I have none either. County Administrator, Mr. Suggs?
Yes, sir.
Haven't heard from, much from you today?
Yes, sir. Uh, good morning, Ms. Chairman, Commissioners. Just a couple of things, as, and, and the Honorable Matt Reynolds has already alluded to one. Don't forget, we have our budget workshops on Wednesday and Thursday. They begin at nine o'clock and then again at ten o'clock for this week. And one last thing, it was great seeing Representative Payne here today, talking about the appropriations that we got. It was a good year for Putnam County, and, and I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Mr. Sullivan as our new legislative coordinator for work with Representative Payne's office and Senator Perry's office on those appropriations, but all around, it's been a good day. So I thank you, Ms. Chairman.
And you know, you don't, never know what Mr. Sullivan does in that back room, but he's working hard doing it, so we appreciate it. I asked him every day to start writing it down so we could see that, but I do appreciate it. So thank you. Mr. Commando?
Nothing to add, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner comments, starting to my left, Mr. Rawls?
Alright, um, wanted to see if we can get a workshop set up in the near future to meet with the city of Palaca. Since I've been elected, we've not met with them. I know it's happened in the past and I just wonder if it, uh, we shouldn't start meeting with them, especially discussing local agreements and any potential joint venturing that we can do with, things starting to move forward, we're coming out of the pandemic and, you know, the landscape has changed quite a bit. So I think that'd be beneficial. Um, at the, at the last regional council meeting, there was a presentation made by Sean LaHava. They, council worked with Flagler County to create a, um, their, a countywide approach to resilience planning. I think, and I, I talked to Sean as I left the meeting and he said that he would love to work with us and then maybe reach out to DOE and see if there's not a possible, possibly for us to get a grant to do the same thing, um, you know, because the, the one thing that the pandemic has taught all of us, or at least we should have learned, is that, um, you know, the definition of resilience changes when you start throwing in, um, all, all the mixes of what we had, not just economically, but medically, people locked in, and then, you know, I could go into a litany of emails that I've received over the past few weeks, especially regarding, uh, mental health and substance abuse and a lot of issues that created, you heard today about the animals. So I, I think that, that's probably something that we should be looking at, um, this coming up with the resiliency plan, so, you know, putting what we've learned in writing, basically. Just reminded that Monday, next Monday at six PM is a town hall meeting at Boswick, their, um, at their community center. Um, that'll be at six PM. I wanna give you a real quick update on the animal services building. Um, I, I met with Ms. Cole from Public Works. She's currently working on more details. I think we're probably seventy percent complete with the design. We're getting to the point now where we really need to sit down with an engineer at some point and start giving to them and saying, do you agree with this? Do you have any issues? But I think we've probably nailed, nailed it down. I don't think there's gonna be any issues. They just need to, um, uh, put their, um, their blessing on it. We do need to start taking a look at some point about getting roof trust engineering. I don't know, you know, we just have to have a conversation about how this is gonna be procured, because you can't get roof trust engineering until you pick a roof trust supplier and you don't wanna do that until you decide how you're gonna buy it. So, uh, and by the way, that takes around eight to twelve weeks nowadays. I think we should have a TDC funds workshop. Um, I think that that's definitely something that we should be looking at and taking a look at how, how we, um, do the TDC, what the TDC does, you know, I, um, was telling, uh, Mr. Suggs, one of, one of my frustrations, when the last TDC meeting I went to, I asked two of the TDC members how much money was available in TDC and they didn't have a clue. And so I, I think it's very important that, that we do get to know, just like the housing, the AHAC committee, um, you know, if, uh, if, if we're, if we're not having oversight and they don't have direction, then they really don't know what, what our, what our expectation is. So I think we should have that. Because there are possibilities for TDC funding for some of the, the, um, waterways and trails events that we, that we've been seeing in Putnam County, especially when you take a look at the, that Barksdale Trail Society and, um, the fact that we're a designated trail town, the city of Palaca, we've got a lot going on. So I think we should have that conversation. And then the trail maintenance fund, um, there was an email sent out requesting that, um, I find out what, uh, what we can do to move forward the, um, the trail maintenance fund. We discussed this, um, gosh, probably, I think it was like November of nineteen, right?
Years ago.
Yeah. Um, we said that we'd be setting up a, um, a trails maintenance fund, so I know with COVID, that just brought everything to a running halt, but, um, that's back in consideration. I don't know if we need to have, have that at a workshop or discuss it further some point in time to get it moving forward.
We'll have budget made.
I don't remember that discussion. I remember that we agreed to maintain certain trails, but I don't remember saying that we'd set up a trail maintenance fund.
Yeah, we did.
Somebody needs to pull that back on the minutes.
Yeah, we did. I, I've, I've read the minutes on that. And we talked about setting one up for future, down the road when there was gonna be a cost. Maybe we could offset it for five or ten thousand a year until we got, till we build up enough money where maintenance was gonna be a part. So I do-
I must've been asleep.
No, you weren't, no, you weren't. You're never asleep, sir, ever.
I think, I, I, it was, I think it was November nineteen, it's been a while.
Is that it?
That's all I got.
Mr. Pickens?
Thank you, Chairman Harvey. I wanna echo Administrator Suggs' comments, um, about Bobby Payne, Representative Payne, he's doing a great job for us and, uh, just really appreciate all the efforts that he's, uh, made in the last, uh, what, five years, I guess? And, uh, should continue to, just continue to get better. It definitely was a, uh, kind of a surprise to get the money for the fairgrounds, but that's gonna be a great addition out there. Um, it, talk about the trail maintenance. Craig McLean came to the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board and talked to us about the public, not Public Works, but, uh, the recreation department taking over some of the maintenance. So we discussed that, but, you know, definitely it's gonna, you know, take some funding to be able to do that if, if we decide to recommend that to the, uh, to the commission, so we probably should workshop that. Holly and I attended the Memorial Day Parade, um, in Palaca and then the ceremony down at the riverfront. And I just wanna thank everybody from the Burt Hodge Lodge and everybody that was involved in putting that together, um, to just, to celebrate and remember, veterans who had, you know, died in service and just served our country. So, uh, one of the first cars in the parade was the sheriff's officer car and I believe it was Joe Wells in there driving, maybe Joe, and I really didn't recognize you in a regular police deputy unit, but anyway. The ceremony was really good, uh, two, two or three great speakers, so really appreciate that. That's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Adamsack?
Um, yeah, I, I too was at the parade with, uh, my wife and my four children. Um, it was a great parade, we really enjoyed it. We did not go to the festivities afterwards, because we actually headed over to the, the Legion in Interlock and to take part in their festivities around the fact that, you know, Memorial Day is, like I said before, Memorial Day is a very important thing to myself and my family. I do appreciate the sheriff's office actually had one of their deputies out there and had the, the canine out there and, and gave some stuff that the kids really enjoyed. Not just my kids, there were several kids there, around what the canine officers do and how they train and let the dog run around a little bit and did a few commands. That was really cool. Um, kids enjoyed it. Um, I do agree with Commissioner Rawls on, I think we should have a workshop at least once a year, probably quarterly, on both the TDC and EDC, just to make sure that we understand what their direction is, as well as what our ideas may be for them, not to dictate to them, but to understand and, and also bat around some ideas, regardless of the Chamber of Commerce or anyone being the people that run it or facilitate it. Um, so, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Turner?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, let me turn my thing on. Okay, um, on, as far as the animal control thing goes, can't we just give you the authorization, Terry, to pay up the twenty-five thousand and get them the engineering they need to move it forward? If it's more than that, bring it back. I mean, we've talked about the damn thing forever since I've been here. Can't we just start trying to move it forward?
Mr. Chairman, we can do anything that the procurement ordinance allows the county administrator doing. I believe I have up to twenty-five thousand.
Well, that's not a violation, is it, to allow you to go ahead and use your purchasing agreement? I mean, we could even go up to the chairman's signature if he decided to do it. And let's try to get this thing engineered and moved forward instead of just talking about it for another year.
We can do that very thing and we've been, uh, meeting with Commissioner Rawls and we talked about this morning, and he and I wanna schedule a sit-down so we can see what, getting this thing moved forward. We can do that very thing and we've been meeting with Commissioner Rawls and we talked about this morning and he and I want to schedule a sit-down so we can see what, getting this thing moved forward.
Well, anytime you feel like you need an update or something like that brought to us, that's fine, but as far as I'm concerned, we've, we've thrashed this thing out about as hard as we need to thrash it and, you know, if we just need engineering, it sounds to me like that's the next step. You know, DeNita probably knows engineers we can send it to and get it stamped or whatever if she's that far along yet. So anyhow, I'd like to see that move along and I, I'd like to say that I'm glad to see that we're going to talk about the Georgetown Riverfront Park. I did it in the Saturday's workshop. I'm glad that we're going to do that. I'm hoping that we can move that project forward. I still don't know if we've determined, I'm going to wait to talk about it till then, but I still don't know if we've determined yet can we have a boat ramp down there or not? Because if we hadn't, we need to try to identify something else south to put a boat ramp on the river using that money. And so, you know, I've said many, many times, it frustrates me to know in how long it takes for government to do things. This one's been going on also for about three years now, trying to figure out, can we do this or not? So I'd like to try to figure out, can we do it? If we can't, then let's try to go do something else instead of just not doing anything on that issue. And that's really all I have today, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Thank you, sir, and I have a few things. Couple ladies in the audience were laughing when you spoke a minute ago. I don't think they understood Samatea language, but they got it now. Memorial Day, yes, it was a great time. Actually, I went to three events, Saturday for the Robert H. Jenkins Memorial, Sunday I went to the funeral home, Masters over here on Silver Lake Drive, and, and that was kind of a sobering thought. You know, the whole three days were for me, but especially walking through the cemetery, looking at all the flags on all the veterans' graves, overwhelming. It really was just an overwhelming moment for me personally and, and you have those moments in life that you see that and you hear the flag flapping in the wind and you think about the sacrifices our men and women made to keep our country free and, and it just really struck me. And then I was able to be at the American Legion and give a speech a little bit on Monday morning and that was a very good time also. Farm Share is the nineteenth. We do need help, as you well know, and we need people, volunteers to sign up. We'll be bringing my cooker and we're going to do some sausages on a stick. I learned that at Buckey's the other day. Yes, I'm sorry, you probably saw it there too, but they were really good, expensive. But I've got a thought in mind, so we're going to do sausages on a stick for Farm Share for our workers. And commissioners, I want to ask a question here. I'd like to go to the town of Interlochen tonight and ask for a joint meeting with the town of Interlochen. The proposed date is July twenty-seventh, it's a Tuesday at six PM. Doing it during the summer, we can use the CH Price Auditorium on Tuesday, July twenty-seventh. Yes.
To do what?
To have a discussion with the town council on a joint meeting with them. If, it doesn't have to be anything formal, as many commissioners that want to attend can attend, but I'd like for us to try to look at that, having that joint meeting with the town of Interlochen. Six o'clock. What, what are you looking?
It just needs to be advertised, right?
Yeah, we would have to advertise it if there's more than, but that could accomplish a West Putnam Town Hall meeting and it could accomplish a few things that we could get done that this board has been wanting to do. So if that's a good date, commissioner, is that okay with everybody?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll just.
What was that date again, sir?
July twenty-seventh at six o'clock, Tuesday night. And we can meet with the town of Interlochen, is that okay? Then I'll move forward by consensus, everybody good with that? All right, good. And that is all I have. Commissioner Adams, that, you have a question?
I'll write it down, tell me that date again.
July twenty-seventh, Tuesday, six PM.
I just wanted to express my regrets for the Farm Share event. Unfortunately, I'm, well, fortunately, I, I have an alternative event that I am teaching at Vacation Bible School, so I will be unable to attend with you. We're, we're doing ours on the weekend this year. It was the only way I can, we could, we're doing it two, two weekends in a row, so it happens to be those two weekends, this weekend and next.
We appreciate that. All right, since there's no further comments, is there any public comments on miscellaneous items? This is the time that the public can speak to us about anything that they want to do. And seeing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.